The board, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. We'll call the board members, please.
Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Charles Ernst.
Present.
Kenny Eich.
He's expected but hasn't arrived, let's leave that open.
Jean Castor.
Present.
Jason James.
Present.
Bill Preavotell.
Do we have any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do. We have, under New Business 8B, we have, and I apologize, we have the wrong information in, had the wrong information in the package, or the inaccurate information. We have the correct ordinance, which Brittany will, Madam Secretary, shall we say, will be distributed to the respected board members.
Well, Madam Secretary, when we ratify the appointment there, I guess, yes, okay.
To be appointed, yes. And might I take this opportunity to also introduce myself for the record? My name is Behrvi Pandya. I joined the city of North Miami Community Planning and Development Department last month as city planner, and I will be the support staff, leading the support staff for all Planning Commission meetings, and I'm very happy to be here.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Welcome to the city of North Miami, and welcome to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Roland, should we go ahead at this point and ratify the secretary? I know it's under No Business, but...
We had, yes, you can, yeah, absolutely.
All right. The Chair will call for a motion approving the appointment of Brittany Durea as the Secretary to the Planning Commission. Kenny, let the record reflect, Kenny Eich has arrived.
I beg your pardon, I'm sorry, I got stuck downtown at the DA's.
It happens, we'll let you put your jacket on, there we go. All right, once again, the Chair calls for a motion to approve the appointment of Brittany Durea as the Secretary to the Planning Commission.
To motion approval?
All right, made by Mr. Preavotell, seconded by Jean Castor, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that carries, very good. We have, yes, congratulations indeed.
Thank you.
You know, just in the interest of humor here, as much as, I need to find out where we've, where your name appears as the city planner, so I can balance the spelling with the pronunciation. Is it in anywhere here in this packet?
I did provide a description earlier.
I see, okay. So it's Behrvi Pandya?
Correct.
Behrvi, now is that two words, Behr and V?
No, I just capitalized the V to make it easier.
Fine, okay. Behrvi Pandya is our new city planner, and she will be working with the Planning Commission now and into the future.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's have the minutes of our preceding meeting of March the 4th. I trust you've all read them at this point. The Chair will entertain a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I approve for approval of the minutes, second.
Charles Ernst moves to approve, Kenny Eich seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. All right, now, we have no continued public hearings nor communications, so let's go on to item 5, PCO 5-14, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending the previously adopted Local Housing Assistance Plan, L-HAP, as required by the William E. Sadowski Affordable Housing Act of 1992 and the State Housing Initiatives Partnership, or SHIP, program for fiscal years 2014 to 15, 2015 to 16, and 2016 to 17, further authorizing the city attorney and city manager to execute and submit the Local Housing Assistance Plan and any other necessary document to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation for its review and approval, as required by Florida law, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair and respected board members, staff is recommending the adoption of the amended Local Housing Assistance Plan, or L-HAP, for the city's State Housing Initiatives Partnership, or the SHIP, program for fiscal years 2014 to 2015, 2015 to 2016, and 2016 to 2017, as required by the state law. At this time, we have our housing manager, Ms. Marie Jean Faruns, and housing coordinator, Ms. Tara Hart, to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right, thank you very much. Members of the commission, before we open the public hearing, do any of you have any questions on this amendment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to hear the staff report first, if they have any, anything the staff would like to do. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from staff, if they could probably do the report first.
All right.
If it's possible, if they have anything.
Can we get the staff to come up then and go through this for the record?
Marie Jean Farin, City of North Miami, Housing Division, Housing Manager.
Thank you, Marie, welcome.
Thank you.
If you would take us through this a little bit and enlighten us as to what, if anything, is actually being amended from the prior agreement, just so we have a clarification on that?
Really, the only thing that is really being amended right now, it's the fact that we're changing the fiscal year from 1415, 1516, and 1617, to amend, we are just amending the year.
So we're just updating the year?
The year, yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Otherwise, all other aspects of this remain the same?
Yes, sir.
All right.
As a point of order, there's also, obviously, the amount to be budgeted for 2016, 2017, which is up and coming. So those years will be forthcoming.
Okay.
The amounts to be provided into the program.
That's actually not known at this time.
Exactly.
No, it's not.
Now, my question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If, I don't, I don't understand how we can go ahead and have them pass this on without the numbers. Maybe that can be explained to us, since I know you expressed, you gave us Exhibit A with estimated allocation for the administrative budget. We don't have those numbers, they were not filled in on our exhibit.
It will never be filled in, it will be filled in after June 30th, once the House reconvenes and then just give us a budget. As it is right now, I just received an email, $183,000 is subject to be budgeted for this upcoming year, but it's not final.
Right. Did you say 183?
183.
183,000.
183,000. But it's not final until we submit our revised L-HAP and for them to just...
And that's all SHIP?
Yes, all SHIP.
Okay.
And that's for 1415?
1415.
All right.
So what we're approving effectively is the administrative outline?
Yes. Until we submit the administrative, we won't be able to obtain the funding.
All right, I understand.
Okay. So, under state law, you have to file this under a certain time period?
Yes.
And then, without having to allocate...
In other words, you have to give us a green light first before they can say they will fund us.
Okay, understand.
Yes.
Does everybody on the commission understand where we are at this point in time?
Yes, I just had a follow-up question.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So, once, once we fill this out and the monies are allocated, well, the total amount is allocated?
Yes.
Will this come back to us filled out, the 1415 portion?
No, we usually put it in, on the newspaper.
Which is published.
Yes, it's public, it's public, yes.
Would it, would it be unreasonable to ask you to perhaps send us at least a letter in our, in an upcoming packet advising us of...
What was allocated?
Yes.
We don't have any problem to do so.
Fine, if you could do that included in a future packet report, it wouldn't be a public hearing, but it would keep us advised as to...
What was allocated?
You know, what forward progress we are making, given the times we're in.
Yeah, at least you will know how much money you had approvers for.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, far cry from what we were getting 10 years ago, but it's better than nothing.
Well, this year, this upcoming year looks like it's gonna double, because last year we had 83,000.
Oh, wow, that's good.
It's some help.
Yes.
Selection year.
Yes, no doubt. I suspect that has something to do with it, yes.
And it was a quadrupling of the year before.
Yes.
With regards to housing, we had a dedication the other day at 415 Northeast 121st Street, I was running late, but you did an outstanding job over there. I'm telling you, that, that was a renaissance. Took a, what's it, three-story apartment building? Four-story?
Yes, the second story looked like a townhouse, and the first one is just like the regular floor.
Absolutely.
It's nine units.
I, I went over there, and I gotta tell you, the place was absolutely amazing, and this is affordable housing, and this is what we wanna continue to do. I mean, you really did a great job with that, and the people, I mean, they were just elated. I was talking to some of the residents there, they're absolutely elated, and I look at that, and then I look at the dichotomy of the nonsense up there on Sixth Avenue with some of that, dens of destruction should be knocked down, and I mean, you did a good job, thank you, I just want you to know that.
Thank you, thank you for recognizing the Housing Division.
Thank you.
We are proud of the Housing Division, it's poorly understood by a lot of the taxpayers, and the demands made on the division greatly exceed the available resources, and we give you credit for pulling off a well-done project.
Thank you, sir.
Now, let's hope we don't have to dip into that for emergency funds for hurricane or flood disaster.
Let us hope.
Well, it will help us a lot.
I'm sure that the process of having to pick, and if there's a lot of applicants for it, is a bit of a challenge.
Yes, it is.
But I noticed in your notice that you did say that it's kind of a first-come, first-served basis?
Yes, yes.
And then that's how you weigh in on, on all the qualifications?
Yes, aside from that, we also promote the first-time, first-time home buyer. Whomever wants to move into North Miami, we assist them with their first, with the down payment and the closing cost. So in addition to the housing, we do assist them with the first-time home buying.
Thank you for pointing that out in your presentation that we got, so that we understand your process.
Yes, thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter is invited to step forward. Public hearing is open.
Everybody, take your time.
Yes, yes, of course. Seeing, hearing, no thundering heard, seeing no rising cloud of dust.
Seeing nobody.
Last call for the public hearing, public hearing is closed. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Preavotell moves to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Charles Ernst, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that item is over with. Now, we have before us this ordinance 1370, is this to be read into the record as a public hearing? It's not on the agenda, are we to, is this just for our information?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, you may.
This, this item is an information item.
An information.
On April 22nd, the city council adopted this ordinance number 1370, which deals with amending terms of office to allow for the terms of planning commission board members and other board members to be co-terminous with the terms of the appointing council members. So it is basically for all three advisory boards, and we, we wanted to bring this as an information item in front of, of this board today.
Well, yes, I probably have a question or two myself, in view of the fact that your worthy chair here was actually appointed by Councilwoman Shelley Gassner, a very long time ago, I think that was in 1990. At what point does my term expire?
Oh, wow.
If you know?
I will defer to the attorney's office.
The council is free to continue to reappoint, so...
So, we just, we just travel on?
Yes, until, until further notice.
Until further notice, all right.
We're glad to have you, Chairman.
Thank you.
My question, wasn't that a charter item, though? Wasn't some of the terms listed in the charter?
The charter was, was amended some time ago, and most of these provisions are situated in Chapter 2, so these are code provisions. In your case, the Planning Commission appears in chap, under Chapter 29, which is the Land Development Regulations, as well as the Board of Adjustment. So, depending on the board, you're situated somewhere within the code.
Yeah.
If I may?
But if it, if there's any sort of, any sort of language that addresses terms in there, would that affect the code at all? This ordinance, in other words, would this ordinance come into conflict with the, with that code, if there's language specific to term limits and appointments, and who appoints it? That's the only thing that I gotta understand.
This is, this is the code. This will be, this is, the ordinance becomes a code once it's codified, so this is an amendment to that particular code section.
One item I noticed that is particularly positive here, has to do with removal, particularly items 2 and 3, any commission member who has two unexcused absences, or three consecutive excused absences in one year shall automatically forfeit membership. Given the difficulties that this board and others have had with members appointed who, for various reasons, could never attend board meetings, this is actually a positive move in the right direction.
The Chair, I'm sure the Chair recalls that this was placed, this was an amendment to the, this ordinance, putting this three consecutive.
Yes.
If you recall, it was, it was upon the suggestion of the majority of this Planning Commission to insert that into the code at the time.
It's good to see that occasionally our suggestions are adhered to, you know? I think that's good, that's encouragement. I would urge all members of the board here to review this in its entirety, perhaps we could have a discussion on it at our next regular meeting, once you've had time to read through the fine points of this. And we appreciate the fact that we've been given this as a point of information. So, let's see here, the Business Development Board, okay, membership terms, Board of Adjustment, Planning Commission. All right, yes, go ahead, Mr. Preavotell.
If I may, I know the intention is, and I agree with the intention, that there be representation when the, when the city has a citywide election, and there is a, a new mayor and new council people, that they're enabled to sort of bring in people of like mind to help support their policies and positions, and that, I believe, is a good thing, that it runs concurrently with them. If I'm reading this properly, though, under the Planning Board, under D, removal, three affirmative votes of the city council shall be required in order to remove a commission member, and in no case need be shown for removal. And a commission member who has two excused absences, okay, aside from the absentee aspect of it, doesn't that undermine the fact that possibly the mayor, or an individual city council person, makes an appointment, wishes for their representation, and let's say they're in the minority, they then immediately get outvoted, three to one or three to two, and that position is vacated, it seems like it's undermined the nature of representation to begin with.
Well, theoretically...
It threatens that, certainly. It threatens speaking out if someone is appointed by, by one of the people.
The argument could be made, although traditionally, I believe the city council would be reluctant to actually exercise that as a capricious form of judgment. Now, the possibility exists, and we, we have to see how this will be implemented from a historical perspective, because we've not prior had any experience with this type of language.
It does seem like it should be either unanimous decision, or the appointing mayor or council person end to other votes. It just seems like if that one person who was duly elected, either as mayor or as city council person, is being immediately undermined, and I just don't think that's a healthy thing in our democracy.
Repeat that, how, how do you wanna do it, though?
Well, if, if, right now...
Let's say, like, District 1 wants somebody...
Yeah, let's, let's say, let's say the mayor has appointed you, for instance, and, and believes in you strongly, and you have an affinity there, and you can represent the mayor's ideals, whoever that mayor, mayor might be.
Right, as it should be.
If the other, if three or four council people sort of gang up, they can have you booted, and either leave a void, or possibly, it doesn't say how this would be replaced, possibly have another vote to, it doesn't articulate that, but to have your seat replaced with somebody of their mind. Therefore, the, in this case of my example, the mayor is not properly being represented on the board. If, on the other hand, one were to say that either it's a unanimous decision amongst the mayor and the city council to eliminate that person, that's, that's fine, or the person making the appointment plus two votes would make it possible as well, that the person who made the assignment is part of the retraction process, and therefore, the mayor or the city council people would not be undermined in the process.
So that would be the person making the appointment plus two?
Yeah.
It'd still be a three to two vote.
In other words, it wouldn't have to be unanimous if it was...
But it's still back at square one, because it'd still be a three to two vote.
Yeah, but it would still preserve that, that aspect of democracy and representation, that whoever it is, whether it be the mayor, those city council people that worked so hard to get those seats and want to have, and that was the intention of this, is to have them to have greater presence, greater representation, reflective of their ideals.
Let's look at the logic of it, though, for a second, I kind of agree with what you're saying, I, if you're an elected official and you want somebody to represent your views up there, that, that's, that should be, that's...
And that's exactly what this is trying to do.
And so, okay, so you're, what you're saying is, the person that is the appointing plus two, well, that person, you hope you're gonna get the two votes, I mean, it's just a mood issue, I would think, because you still need the three votes. You know that the person that appointed you is gonna vote for you, hopefully?
No, 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 you're, you're kind of, you're kind of, you're catching the opposite side of it.
Oh, I see, so, okay, okay, you're talking to...
I'm trying to protect...
Two to two.
I'm trying to preserve and protect the right of that mayor, council person, to keep somebody on the board, as opposed to being sideswiped.
But I don't understand, in council, correct me if I'm wrong, it's still a three to two vote, though, wouldn't it be? I mean, so, isn't that a mood issue?
The issue is, I think that the appointing person is guaranteed to be one of the three votes, that's what you're trying to say.
Yeah, that, that would be okay, if they were one of the three votes in the majority, but it would be kind of a tragedy, and it really undermines this, this, the democratic system we have here, that all of a sudden you get a few people in power and they completely wipe out. I could take it to the extreme, you have one person against four on our mayor and city council, could be a city council person, it could be a mayor, it could be one person versus four in some capacity, they make all their appointments and through all these various boards, and the next week, because they're at odds, those four people at the city council level say, whoa, we're gonna eradicate all your appointments, right down the line, and we wanna appoint this, that, or they'll logjam, because it's, again, there's no provision for how it's gonna be replaced, and I don't think that's healthy for the system.
It's, it's an interesting point for, for discussion and consideration.
It's expeditious from a dictatorial point of view.
I see, I see Bill's point here, but what does it matter, anyway?
On the other side of the coin...
What, what, let's say you're in a reverse order opinion, how is it gonna affect the decision?
Well, actually, this language has been in existence for many, many years, I have yet to see it practiced, but this is not one of the amendments that, that's before you, so it's actually, it's, it's interesting that we're, we're raising an issue.
It's just a discussion.
Right, exactly. And, and that this is now coming to light, so, and if you notice, all the other boards are similarly situated, so it's not just the Planning Commission, you have it pretty much across, if you look at the Board of Adjustment, same thing, if you look at the Business Development Board, same thing, it requires three-fifths vote, so it is pretty much across the board. No other board has, to my knowledge, has brought this up, but this is a recommendation that could be supplied to, submitted to the city council for their ultimate review and, and approval. It's, it is within their purview to, you know, to take your advice and, and have it modified or not.
It's certainly a, a point for consideration, and, and one of the thoughts that I've got that I can't quite get my hands around yet, how many members of this particular board, as it stands now, actually were appointed by the current city council, realistically?
Actually, I think...
You were reappointed, okay, fine.
We were. We've all been reappointed.
So, it's the act of the reappointment now that triggers all of the rest of this? Okay.
No, I don't, I don't believe it's the act of reappointment, it's, it's as you have the new members come in, there, there is, yes, a reappointment, but what I'm discussing, or trying to present, is, is that after the fact, after the appointment, then there is this chance to, you could have imbalance...
If there was great animus on the council and they chose to...
Yeah, and you, you lose that balance of power that's inherent in our system, that you try to, to balance things out a little bit. You know, it's, it's, it's nice when dictorial, like a dictatorship works in your favor, but it really isn't so good if it's working against your favor, and so I think the typical democratic option is to try to keep that balance of power and to try to work it out that way, rather than steamroll everything, because it could come back, and inevitably it comes back to, to, to bite you in the tail.
What you're also suggesting, though, is it presents a scenario of a revolving door as every one of your planning...
It could, yeah, could leave it open to, yeah. And what I'm saying is, not just for our board, but I would suggest it for...
It could become capricious in nature with, with the council.
Right, and, and therefore, and productive to the entire city.
From meeting to meeting, or council session to council session, if someone, if conflicts arise, the board members become a pawn.
Exactly, and, and today, we have zero people in the audience, zero, but, but it would take away the potential of that representation. Let's say there were, you know, we have six people, maybe there are six different ideas, maybe at some point there are five exactly the same, but we would wind up, through this system, just eliminating that other idea, which may be the right idea, which may be something insightful, and it would be, it's, we're leaving ourselves open to, to mitigating that, that potential.
Well, here's what I would suggest, you raised a very good point, and the Chair might well endorse an amendment here.
But can we?
Well, we probably, we can make a recommendation on anything that comes before us, this isn't exactly before us, it is a point of information. What I would suggest, if the commission would approve, I think Mr. Preavotell has raised a good point, I'd like you to take this back and read it carefully, because there may be some tweaking that might be considered, and ask that staff put this on the agenda for next month, or for the next regularly scheduled meeting, so that Mr. Preavotell could then address it as a, an agended item, and then we could, I think, effectively make a recommendation to council to consider an amendment.
I think this is quickly going to council, though.
Oh, it's going, I thought this was over and done with.
No, it's already passed.
It's already passed, yeah.
This is, this passed...
This is given to us not for council action, but for our...
April 22nd, yeah, this is, this is for your information, this is as passed, and that was not one of the sections that was touched, amended.
So there's no reason to rush to judgment, but it's a valid point.
It's a done deal, we're pretty much wasting our time here talking about it.
Well, unless we, unless there's some way of trying to get a modification or so.
Well, that's what you'd be attempting to do, and that's a very reasonable request, but I'd like it put on the agenda so we can have a, a vote that would be as part of a public hearing, on an agended item. This today is point of information, and you've raised a valid point, and I, I would ask all members of the commission to give serious consideration to Mr. Preavotell's recommendation on that, but I don't wanna take a vote on it, because it's not on the agenda, and we can't really, you know, properly vote on something that hasn't been publicly advertised.
Mr. Preavotell, also, to staff, is it in our purview to look at what we're asking as an ordinance coming, or as an amendment?
I have undertaken my previous modifications under the advice of this board, and it's actually passed. I was... I was alluding to one earlier, and that was the three consecutive excused absences in one year. That is a language that was proposed by this commission, and it became your code.
Right.
So if you're gonna look at one particular section, take the opportunity to look at the entire section, dealing with the planning commission. Don't just look at one section in isolation, look at the entire division of the LDRs that addresses your commission, the planning commission, and that is found in Division Two, all of it, in its entirety. Take that opportunity. It'll take me almost the same amount of time to draft the entire division as it would be one particular section for council consideration.
I think that Mr. Galdos makes a valid point, and I would encourage the board to do the research. I believe the LDRs are online.
Yes, sir, and that would be, it's under Chapter 29, Article Two, Division Two. The entire section dealing with the planning commission is there. And sometimes, when you read the entire, the entire section pertaining to the planning commission, it makes more sense than reading one particular section or a sentence in one section. Sometimes, you have to read it in what's called an illegal jargon, pari materia, which means read it in its entirety, because there may be some factors you're missing. So if you read the entire division that deals with the planning commission, it may, you know, it, it may cause you to modify your thoughts accordingly, because you're reading the entire section in unity, not one particular.
And there may be other observations.
Exactly, exactly.
But now, what I'm not clear on is, right now, the way that it's set up, is everyone is appointed for a two-year term, correct?
Or is it a four-year term?
Or is it a four-year?
Well, it's co-terminus.
Co-terminal now, before it wasn't, though. My understanding was that we were, every two years, half the commission was reappointed after two years, and then, it, it followed the cycle of the city elections.
Yes.
Not necessarily the particular commissioners, but the elections. So half the board is technically up for appointment again, I believe, in June or July.
Is that really?
Is that accurate now, or is that, has that changed?
It, it would become effective from the date of this ordinance. So, yeah, when, when, when the term, it's co-terminus from, for whoever decided to appoint you, your, then your span, your tenure will be in tangent with the tenure of the, that particular elected official. When that, that particular elected official is, that particular elected official may, may run, may win, everything is status quo. So it all really depends on the outcome.
I want to look at this realistically, and I know in the past that a lot of times board members will get a name, and they may be recommended, and so I've, I've seen commissioners trade off on their appointments because of, of the way that the process works. There's a set number of people that applied, or that would like to be on the board, or whatever. So I'm not sure that it's not divvied up among the different commissioners to make sure that, that certain people will get appointed. In other words, you know, how are we alleviating, maybe with the co-terminus situation, it may be eliminating that process.
Well, effectively, each person has a term limited.
Right.
So at the end of that four-year cycle, it is four years for the council, right?
That is correct, and two for the mayor.
So if the mayor.
Is the mayor two, or did we go to four years on that?
Two years.
Two years presently.
That, that referendum failed.
There's some ambiguity there somewhere on this.
So, yeah, that's, and I, I thought we were moving to make the mayor a four-year term.
I think he was defeated.
They tried, defeated, right?
The referendum failed.
Oh, well, it shows what I know. All right.
There, if, if I may, I, I was encouraged to read the rest of, and I had actually glanced over, but maybe I didn't digest it quite the same. Planning commission write-up is really, it amounts to less than a full page, right? But in the beginning of that, under a membership, one, and this is sort of similarly troubling as, as the point that I had raised, and that is, each member of the city council shall nominate one member of the planning commission, or any of the other commissions, which nominate, which nomination shall be subject to approval of the majority of city council. And that's, that's new language. So in other words, right from the start, there is someone who is in the minority on the council, may have difficulties just getting their initial appointment on board. And I, I can understand that the other two seats, there are seven positions, and there are two alternate, assigned by a majority of city council, and I can appreciate that. But doesn't it seem like that the people who have just been elected into position, representing their district, should be able to have that, I think that the nature of this is to have that representation?
I, I think that's a good question, and maybe we should bring that up with, I mean, that, that, I, yeah, that you should have, I, I kind of agree with you.
And luckily, our, our mayor and city council get along wonderfully these days, and there's no problem. But someday in the future, someday, suppose there is something where there's this great chism, then you want to be able to still have some semblance of, of order and continuity in their representation.
Well, Mr. Prevettell, let's, let's approach it this way. You now have two points, and there may be another point out there somewhere. Supposing, well, let me ask staff, do we have a meeting next month? Is that anything that we foresee on the event horizon?
Yes, the next meeting is on June 3rd, and.
And you have items in the process?
We do have, we have something, yes.
So, we're going to be here June 3rd.
No, I'm not gonna be here.
You're not?
No.
We didn't vote on that, Kenny.
I don't think you can leave, no.
And I, I don't remember, I didn't get a memo from Paula, so are you, is this a legitimate planned departure?
Yeah, 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 I'm gone. May 31st, I'm gone.
I, I see. For how long do you expect to be gone from here?
Couple of weeks.
A couple of weeks. I see. Well, what we could do is maybe put this down for July, and make this a discussion item. July should be relatively lighthearted. We're, we're gonna break in August, provide 60 days, and if Bill would draft proposed language for his two points, and if you would all go back and read the LDRs, that's Chapter Two, you said?
Specifically, Chapter 29, Article Two.
Article Two.
Division Two, and I'll give you the, the particular sections that deal only in, with the planning commission, and that would be sections 2-201 through 2-205.
Don't we have copies of that that they just handed out? It's not the same thing?
No, you only have, see, that's, that's the thing. You only have one particular section, which is the section that was amended. So you're not, you're not seeing the other sections, you're not seeing the other four sections, you're missing those. You need to bring those in into your discussion, because sometimes you may find that your questions may be answered elsewhere, or you may have more questions and more concerns. Read it in, in its entirety, and if you're gonna review one, might as well take the time to review the other four sections.
What was the, I'm sorry, what was, give me those chapters again.
Yes, sir, that would be, well, it's Chapter 29.
Chapter 29.
Article Two.
Okay.
Article Two.
Two.
Division Two, which is, Division Two, which is the planning commission, and commencing with Section 2-201, which.
2-201.
Yes, sir, which basically, it's, it's the powers and duties of the planning commission. That's where it starts, that's where yours, and you're not looking at it here, because it's not included. That was not one of the sections that was amended.
You said Chapter 29 is the LDR.
Exactly. That's where you're housed, the LDRs. And that would be, the entire planning commission spans from, from 2-201 to 2-205. Through, it's through that section, okay? So you, you have five distinct sections under this division, which address the planning commission. This is where, this is your jurisdiction, right there, okay?
We're not some both.
So, gentlemen, you have some homework to do, and let's see if we can make some recommendations that would address these concerns, and perhaps, over the, overdue time, after review by the council, perhaps we'll make this into a better ordinance.
Time for discussion?
More discussion?
Well, not of this exact item, no, but just.
Oh, all right, you want something else? Okay.
If I may.
Boy, you won a lot tonight.
There you go. Well, I didn't expect, I forgot about this, even though I've gone to all the city council meetings, I didn't look at the details. But speaking of, in, in going to the city council meetings, I, I see that there is something good about them, in the sense that, well, there are many good things about the city council. There are many good things about the city council. But in terms of the structure, the structure of a city council meeting, as opposed to our meetings, in particular, the fact that there is a citizens forum during city council meetings, used to be at the end of the meeting, now it's at the beginning of the meeting, which allows people with various concerns to come up, in the city council case, they're given two minutes, it's very brief, but to have people in the audience that might have a concern regarding planning, or something they'd like to voice, and to be able to make that available to them, things, to make, to give them a, a platform for a period of time, and possibly our discussion and response. It could be timed, it may be timed, it may not be timed, and it could be open to, to review whether the, the board itself, which is to perpetuate the conversation, that's one aspect. The other aspect is that the city council, at the end of their meeting, does have a report amongst all the people who are on the, sitting at the dais, as well as the city attorney, city manager, and so on. And I'm wondering if, if there might be a possibility that we have a similar format, where especially on a brief meeting like this, if someone has something on their mind that they'd like to present, that each of the commissioners would be able to share their thoughts, and, not that I've ever been reserved from doing that, but.
No, you've never been shy about that at all.
No, no, I have not been shy, but there's not always a form for every, for various topics. A lot of times, we have to stick to the topic at hand that was only formally introduced to us, and there isn't an informal discussion period. And when the city council has their discussion, it is not necessarily a, a voting matter, it could be a voting matter later on, but it is a matter of purely discussion, and to evoke thought and, and ideas, to be able to make the process better down the line, or some other issue better down the line. And with that, as the city council does, I would go to whatever representation we have from the city, and also ask them, if they have, from our deputy city attorney and such, and our, our planner, if they have anything in particular that they want to bring up, that was not necessarily on the agenda, but just for discussion, or just to keep us apprised of current events.
The, the problem that I see with this, and I, I just want to voice this, so that perhaps our city attorney can then counsel us on this, when we get into freewheeling discussions at our level, because we're a board of record, the risk exists that something we may discuss today may come before us three months or six months later, and then leave the decisions of this board subject to attack in the courts by claiming that we were prejudicial in our viewpoint, because of some discussion we had three months or six months earlier. The allegation could be effectively raised in court, that we were predetermined for or against a particular item that then comes on the agenda. And that could be dangerous. But that perhaps reads too much into it, Roland. We, we bow to your consideration and wisdom on this.
I, I tend to agree with your observation, as well as your, the reason you're created is to, you have a more narrow focus on particular items that affect the city, whereas the council is a broader, they, they have to look at everything. Again, Section 2-201 outlines your powers and your duties. It is, it is by code. You, you, you're not really allowed, unless the code allows you to exceed those limitations, you're not allowed to. That would be considered ultraveris, which is outside the scope of your function or jurisdiction. You have A through H, and this is basically your script, this is, this is your niche, this is what you're, you've been brought on to, for the city, you're the experts, A through H, powers and duties of the planning commission. You're welcome right now to discuss, review, do anything within these powers that have been granted to you, and you're authorized by council to, to work on these items. Anything beyond that would require a, a codeman, actually, to allow you to go beyond your, it's a rather broad scope, but it is, it is one that, it is, it does have its limitations.
I, I think the council was probably the venue that public, public opinion should be addressed in, and, and I, I feel that, you know, we should, we should only really be concerned with the items that come before us. And, and, you know, we're, certainly, there's a public hearing session that people are allowed to come to and speak their mind on that particular item. But I, I think if we start broadening the scope of that, and allowing everybody to start opinionating what they want, you know, if they don't like something that Johnson-Wales is doing, or Biscayne Landings is not doing, then, then we start losing focus as to what, what our purpose is here, to address the items that are brought to us by staff.
And each board has a clearly, clearly defined role to play. You don't hear the Board of Adjustment making suggestions for a comprehensive plan. That's, that's your, that, this is your purview, this is your field of operation. I don't hear this board bringing up a variance or a special exception, that's the Board of Adjustment. That's why they exist.
Well.
You cannot usurp the power of either the council or another board that is in place, and its sole purpose of existence is to hear those, those kinds of items. You have a role, within that role, you, you, it's, that's your, your realm, right there. But it's not limitless.
Yeah, just to be clear, I wasn't trying to assert the power of city council, but it is, having gone to basically all the city council meetings, it's, it's painful to, to know that some people have various things to share, and it's, it's limited to the two minutes, and basically, there's no decision or discussion based on it, sort of, you have to quickly do it out, so it's tough.
And that is within their purview, Bill, it wouldn't be within ours. What I would think was, Bill, you and I have attended several meetings on the downtown redevelopment, and that's something I'd like to bring up tonight. Also, I'd like to bring up parking garages tonight, and I think that's within the purview of the planning commission. And, you know, we have all of these boards, like last night, I was at the CRA advisory, and it's like concentric rings, we, we kind of overlap each other. And we're now, we're talking about downtown redevelopment from the railroad tracks, hopefully, to Northeast Sixth Avenue, maybe to Northeast Fourth Avenue, and that should concern the planning commission. And one of the things that I brought up last night at the CRA advisory, you know, this isn't my first radio, I've been here like over 40 years, I've seen all kinds of plans come up for 120 Fish Street for Northeast Sixth Avenue, and nothing ever seems to get off the ground, and I'm hoping that this downtown redevelopment will get off the ground. And one of the things that I, I would like to see happen is us, right now, start, I think it's this coming month, we, the, the review of the land use ordinance, it's been seven years, and I would like to take a look at the height and the density, and this would possibly be a great foundation to help us get development going by increasing the height and the density. Also, one of the other things that I brought up, I would like to, Mr. Chairman, I, I would, what I would like to see is that maybe our next meeting, if the planning department can, get a list of all parking garages, whether they're residential, the height, what they border, or whether they're business, like Johnson and Wales, they have a parking garage which borders the residential, but I walk through San Souci, I see several parking garages, because this is gonna be a big thing coming up for us with Biscayne Landings and future redevelopment. I also happen to be the chairman of the Housing Authority, and I, I want to look at things on Sixth Avenue as far as height, bringing in and outside developers, going for federal grants, going for state grants, getting with the county, getting with various entities, the city of Miami, the city of Hialeah, and starting to push this thing forward. I mentioned the other day that we had a ribbon cutting at 415 Northeast 121st Street, and that is absolutely excellent. I mean, the, the quality of, of that building was just superb, and I'd like to see some changes happening, instead of just dancing with the issue. And we do have four different boards, we have the CRA, which is the council, we have the CRA advisory, the downtown redevelopment, the planning commission, and, you know, we, we gotta. And, you know, we gotta kind of like get on the same page with this if we're gonna make things happen. So that's why I would like to see, excuse me, I would like to see for the next meeting if we could get a list of these parking garages, because I know we cannot, correct me if I'm right or wrong, can we formulate an ordinance or does that have to come from an elected official?
You can advise upon, again, A through H, anything dealing with these topics or subject matters, you can advise the council to, you can propose change in an ordinance. But the thing is, what's...
Can we do it as a board, or does that limit it to the individual? In other words, what he's saying, it would not take a board endorsement for them to present the item. If Mr. Eich has a point or wants to approach him about that, he can do that on his own without...
Or do we have to do that as a board?
Do you have to do that as a board?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I'll give you an example. One of the things that I see is parking garages that border the residential area such as LA Fitness. And it wasn't covered properly, it's not landscaped properly, so the lights intrude into the residential area. I'd like to propose an ordinance that within so many years, they have to block that out, disguise it, beautify it, you know, do something. Or, I'll give you an example, Miami Beach, I go over to the beach, I go to Bay Harbor Island, I see beautiful parking garages that are but the residential area, but do not intrude with their lights or with their aesthetics into the residential area. I look at the back of Johnson and Wales, I see their lights over there. So I would like to propose an ordinance in the future that within so many years, they have to correct this with certain aesthetics, with certain design features that preserve the integrity of the residential area, and also for future use, as we're looking at Biscayne Landings. I do not want to see a sterile parking garage go up there, I want to see something of beauty, you know, and that is the intent, I believe, of the planning commission. I think, and that's what Bill is getting at, because it's our eyes and our ears and our senses, we touch this, we see it. You know, we live here, we feel it every day, and that's, I think, the genesis of this board. We want to get our ideas out there to beautify the city, to make it a better place to live.
And if I may, what the, as an example, what Commissioner Eich just sort of expressed, or the nature of him expressing that, expressing that, is what I was proposing. Now, I go to our city attorney and ask, were we just threading thin ice by having sort of to touch on some of those items and discuss it? Or is that, can we do that now and in the future, touch on various things that pertain to planning, to the endeavor to try to get a better end result for our city?
I believe that the comprehensive plan is coming up to this board for review, where, I believe, very soon...
Yeah, the evaluation and appraisal report will be due before the end of this calendar year. It will be brought before the commission. The evaluation and appraisal report, which is the amendment to the comprehensive plan, is due before the end of this calendar year, and it will be brought before the commission, before December.
One of the, one of the things that was brought up last night, and I think this is very important, that the planning commission know about it and also staff. The CRA is due to sunset in 2016. And we have to get projects on the drawing board to present to the county, otherwise we lose what's known as the TIF funding. Now, a lot of us might say, well, who cares if the CRA goes asunder? Well, what happens now, like at Biscayne Landings, when that project is developed, we get 100% of the tax increment funding from Biscayne Landings. That could be millions of dollars that will come into the coffers of the community redevelopment agency, which in turn can help redevelop northeast 16th Avenue, which in turn can help redevelop 125th Street. If we let the CRA go, then the county gets their money. Right now, the county and the city, that TIF money will come into the CRA. But if we let the CRA go, that means all the county taxes, instead of going to our North Miami CRA to stay within our geographical boundaries, will then go to the county, to their project. And we don't want that to happen. So, you know, time is of the essence, time is of the essence here. That's why I say, we want to look at this plan, we want to get it going before, way before the end of the year, because if we lose the CRA, you know, we're gonna lose a very vital instrument for the city. I mean, the CRA has done some good things in spite of some of the things that I've heard out there. And I've seen CRAs like Miami Beach, where they did down there on South Point, I mean, beautiful, beautiful work. And we can really do some great things with that, you know, and that's, and it would be instrumental in developing our core. That's why, members of staff, that's why I'm bringing this to your attention. And in fact, if you would, maybe you'd be advisable at the next, the council is the CRA board, maybe you should be there and see what our qualms are, maybe, I know you're new here, but Frank Stidman was here the other night, he brought that up, and it's very important that we all kind of get on the same page. Am I trying to stand up here and really, but I think it's really important, because we're all looking for the same thing, to have a nice place to live.
And just to point out, there have been so many changes, relatively new city council, a lot of people in our community planning and development have changed and elsewhere in the city, and maybe all of us have seen many years of frustration, and maybe there are some policy things that could be adjusted or changed to help make it, to keep us better informed, better communication, and to be more productive in whatever capacity we might be able to represent. So that's just the thinking behind that, trying to facilitate more communications.
Well, this is...
With that, Mr. Chairman, may I, can I, can we direct staff to get a list of the parking garages?
Well, yes, we can request staff to do that. That may take more than a month, but certainly they can be requested to do that, we don't know what else they have in mind. But certainly, staff could be requested to gather a list of parking garages as expeditiously as possible. If you can't have it in a month, maybe in two months, but you get it and tell us what we're looking at. One of the issues that I see in the back of my mind for development pertains to the railroad tracks there on the east side of town. There's still a lot of discussion about a high-speed rail connection tying in Miami, Fort Lauderdale, Palm Beach, and Orlando, and forecasted to potentially be up and running in two years. Now, of course, I'd be quite surprised if it actually did work in two years, but all the same, it's there. And there is a proposal to do a tri-rail prospect along that rail line as well. Now, if we, as a city, recognize that there is the chance of tri-rail coming through here on the east side of town, which would be really good for those who have to commute places, we've no provisions, no master plan as to how and where we would accommodate the cars for people that would drive to the tri-rail. Because we would, as a city, we would certainly want to have a tri-rail station in North Miami. It would serve our interests, the interest of our residents, to make provision for that. But we don't seem to have a lot of information flowing down on what the planning and wish list would be for that railroad track line. We hear it in bits and pieces, but nothing concrete ever comes to us. Yes, Mr. Ernst?
I was involved with the Rain Industry Association South Florida seminar last week in Fort Lauderdale with All Aboard Florida regarding this issue. And as it turns out, a lot of the cities have to pick up the tab for providing the parking spaces for their stations that they want to put in there. And they also have to worry about right-ofways of streets, and it's a lot that has to be ironed out yet with All Aboard Florida. And then tri-rail is technically in competition with them, and they're still trying to negotiate how they want to be able, perhaps, to share tracks along the right-ofways. Right now, all that track is Florida east coast properties that runs through our city. They would have first say-so over as to who would build a station and where. So, yeah, it's a long way and a lot of planning, but for now, North Miami is not in the discussion. Abentura is the only city in downtown Miami, I believe, are the only two cities that have been discussed in their proposal for their stations and their routes.
This discussion is exactly the point I was trying to make, that isn't it good to have some, and we may be doing this, as I said, on thin ice, but isn't it good to have a little bit of conversation on these matters which may be, have great importance somewhere down the line, and that if we don't talk about them now or sort of forecast them and be prepared for them, that we get blindsided. Inevitably, we get, something comes up, it's presented to the, to our planning commission, we wind up, I hate to say it, but a lot of times rubber stamping it, we don't really get to thoroughly, there's not much that we can change or modify in it, it becomes rather difficult. And, you know, maybe there are some items that can be discussed, such as the train station, so that it...
Yes, because the train station isn't linked to both parking and housing, you don't have the funding mechanism to construct it.
And you don't want to discuss it when it's too late, when it's a done deal.
Bill, didn't that come up with downtown redevelopment about the railroad station?
I'm not sure, because I've been the tenant of downtown redevelopment.
No, no, but I mean, Bill and I did, and I thought it was down there at the...
Right near the...
At the downtown redevelopment, I thought it was brought up down there, that that was one of the goals of downtown redevelopment, was to have a railroad station, you know, and...
But as of now, I don't know if they have that on their plans. I know that Abentura and downtown Miami are the only two cities.
If I'm not mistaken, Bill, was that not brought up at downtown redevelopment, that we wanted to have a railroad station at 125th Street?
It was briefly touched upon, but in the downtown workshop, there was nothing definitive. There was, it was soliciting ideas from the audience, I'm not too sure what the...
Again, I think we're at the mercy of All Aboard Florida. And for the east coast properties as to what they want to decide.
Here, this again, where we're all in this together, the CRA, they want to concentrate all their funding on downtown. Now, downtown would expand the railroad tracks to northeast Sixth Avenue, possibly to northeast Fourth Avenue, okay? And we want to have a core to develop downtown. Once you get that downtown developed, like other CRAs, you increase your tax base. When you increase your tax base, your CRA can become perpetuating by itself, okay? And use that funds to increase the tax revenue in the rest of the city. And one of the things that was spoken out there, touched on, I don't know how, you know, we ought to bring that back up again and see where we're at, because we're, they were asking for ideas for the CRA, to bring it before the county. And I think it's something that we, as a planning commission, look at in conjunction with the downtown redevelopment.
My suggestion to the downtown development commission is to try to get a hold of All Aboard Florida and find out what exactly they have on their mind with regards to what they're planning for Abentura, and, you know, why is not North Miami mentioned in this? And, you know, what's our part and why?
If I may make a suggestion, the next time we have a meeting, the downtown redevelopment committee, I think all the people from the planning commission should be there.
Well, that, or invite them to come to us, but either way, there's got to be an exchange.
That would be a good idea.
The transportation issue is rather interesting, and I'm not surprised Abentura's out in the lead, they've got a lot more money. However, it does not serve the interests of our residents today and those who will live here tomorrow for us to sit back and say we have no control over our fate. What we should be out there doing is developing a progressive master plan in the event that these trains should actually start running, so that we have something conceptual in mind and are in a position to become a player. Granted, we're economically disadvantaged today, but that's no reason for us to be bypassed. And I think that we'll be caught with our pants down at some point in time in the next decade if we don't put that on the agenda. So, let's not beat these issues to death. Bill, you've got your assignment, in sixty days, come back to us with some languages that you think are gonna help fine tune this ordinance, and we'll move that forward. To staff, on the E, on the ear report, we really don't want to be in a position where you present the ear report and we have to approve it that night in order to have the city council vote on it next week. That is not going to be good. We would like to have three separate meetings to go over this ear report, so that we can discuss issues of building heights and parking garages and transportation initiatives. If we get into the situation where we have to do this in December, and, oh, I'm sorry, there wasn't time, and the city council has to vote on it tomorrow night, that's not going to do well. You know, we have a lot riding on land development regulations, and there are members of the city council that are not enthused about building heights, and we understand that. And we're not here to convince them all of that wisdom, but the reality is, there's no more land to be made in this city we have to build up because we can't build out.
And what you're saying is by having it advanced, there might be more of a chance of shaping that before it becomes the finalized format?
I would hope, yes.
That we could have a little bit of input on it.
We would like to start this ear process in September.
Actually, what I was referring to earlier was that December is the deadline for the evaluation and appraisal report.
December's the deadline.
Right, so obviously, the process would start ahead of time.
We would hope by September at the latest.
You're exactly right.
Traditionally, August, we're not here, we normally do not, yes. And we need to plan for special meetings.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I don't know what kind of budget the city council has for the kind of public involvement we did the last time we revamped the LDRs. Probably, they don't have a budget for that.
Let me, may I ask you a question, if we're to raise the height limits, the height limits on, let's say, 120 Fish Street, was it now, 100 feet, 10 stories, something like that? I don't know off the top of my head, if we wanted to raise that, does that have to go to the vote for the public?
I understand that with the height, with the height issue, the, I think that it had gone through, through the previous, from my limited knowledge, it has gone through the rigors of, you know, meetings and things like that, yes. And I think that it was, finally came out that the infrastructure in this city at this time is built to capacity and does not have enough capacity to provide for additional height or additional title, you know, nuances that we're talking about.
Can we bring that up at another time, though?
Let me, let me just clarify something, I'd be more than happy to call it that.
Yes, I'll try.
It's time that we look at reality, okay? We can either kill the city and go to 10 mills and be a poor city helping nobody, or we can start to look at development on Northwest Seventh Avenue from 119 to 143rd, looking like we can make it into Brickell Avenue, 30, 40 stories high off of I-95. We do have the capacity with the water and sewer to deliver that. Same thing on 125th Street, there's no reason why that we cannot look like Coral Gables. We want to sit on our hands and just chase our tail, then the city's doomed. That's why I say we have to look at the height and the density and increase it.
All right. I agree with you, Kenny, we do.
Can I just touch on the schedule, though, please? If we, if we back this out, if you're saying it's due in December, that's really when the council needs to pass, at the last date for the council to pass, I believe, correct? They may have two readings, that brings it into November. We really, if we could, to start this, if we really want to have like three serious months, it should, if we could get something possibly in July or...
We really should start getting this going, the sooner the better.
Sooner the better, so that, and if we don't have a meeting by chance, then there's no harm lost, nothing lost. But we better, it's better for us to have it earlier, so the city council has time for it also.
2016 is around the corner, and I'm gonna tell you, we'll lose that CRA and we're gonna lose a lot of money if we don't...
Staff shall strive to meet the planning commission.
We have the utmost confidence, and we want you to know we're behind you. All right, if there's nothing else, let's...
May I, Mr. Chair, I wanted clarification on Commissioner's request on the listing of all parking garages. Did you mean the garages that are bordering residential areas?
I like all the parking garages that we have in the city, most of them do border, most of them do border residential areas or are in residential areas.
Oh, so it's basically all of them.
Some of them are well done like in San Souci, others are horrible.
We will have to work with the IT department to get information and, you know, prepare a report. And it's probably going to take us a little while to do the entire citywide study.
About two months, that's good.
Yeah, that's good.
That's excellent, no problem.
September is good, what is, July, July and then, okay, so, July?
That's a target, if you don't make it, but, you know...
Right, June and then July, excuse me.
Target July.
No, no, no.
I got September in my head because of the other reasons.
July is, July is good.
Yeah, we have whatever is in the pipe now, and Mr. Pervetel's issues, and...
Yes, sir.
The garages, and then we'll recess in, in August and come back in September and start dealing with the ear, with the ear issues, all right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. July is good, yes.
All right, very good. Gentlemen, if there's nothing further, this commission stands adjourned at 8:16.
Congratulations on a, a good first meeting there.